We made it guys. Oh, we're in here. We found a freaking MacBook dude, like one of the first generation. X-rays have been found, confirmed.
Those are staples!
This is the hospital that we went into a couple of weeks ago. And they literally came and boarded up everything. This is crazy. I guess our video has been seen. Look at that, they boarded up everything. This was not like this when we were here last.
This is brand new stuff dude, look at this!
Dang, they really did!
Oh my goodness!
Jesus Christ! We're here, back in Sparta, Georgia. About to get into-
What's up, what's yours?
He said hi. About to get into the school that we seen a couple of weeks ago. Here we are, it's pretty dark. No, this is just one room, there's multiple places to get in. See out here, through the broken glass. There's multiple places to go in here. Uh, since it looks like my old city, I might put my mask on, but I probably won't right now, I'll see what it feels like later.
Yeah.
I just know the hospital. Uh, that was affecting me pretty heavily. Uh, dude, yeah, we got an entrance right here to the door. Charity's old keyboards. The only thing I'm worried about is... This place has a very bad reputation of uh, gang activity as y'all know. And we were at a gas station before we came here to get some food. And it was in the main town, which is right up the road from this place. And there was two security guards there, uh, for that gas station and I couldn't believe that. They didn't-
Yeah, that was a little scary.
It was weird. Now we're outside, in the, I guess the courtyard. We're gonna try to get in one of the other buildings. Hopefully, we're gonna get into this main one right here. Alright, so that's possibly our way in, that door down there. But I'm gonna try to use this door over here first, just in case. It'll be easier to get in. Okay, so that door is locked. There's no way I can get in there. No, they took that door out. We're gonna go down, down here. That little doorway, that seems like our own way in. Let's check it out. It is dark and nasty in here. Now this is like- So, we're gonna have to find another way in. But this place is like, this is like the boiler room in here. Disgusting. Caution, asbestos hazards.
God dang!
Dang, we're up in here without our masks right now.
As long as you don't break it. And breathe it in, that's alright.
Okay guys, I think I found our way in. The chain's broken. Let's check it out, explorers.
Oh god!
That sex got flashlights. Alright, just starting off the bat, we got trophies.
Oh man!
Jesus Christ. Books in here. We got fiberglass in here. Old chalkboard. Dang! Check that out there. Okay. Officially made it into the school.
They got tests in here too.
Dude, they got barrels in here, like... Blue barrels in here, like the big plastic ones.
Really?
Yeah. Dude, is that a vinyl record- that's a vinyl record player.
No, what?
Look at that!
Dude, look at this! Do you know what this is?
No, what is it?
That is a film projector.
A film projector?
That is a film projector.
Wow!
You know those circle, those circle things?
Yeah.
One there, one there, that's a film projector.
What? There's out there, that's the, that's the road.
Tons of books. Oh man, they have math books in here.
They got math books, I'm so excited to look at math books.
Oh man, me too.
Dude, I wonder if some of these, I wonder if some of these- There's liquid in it dude.
You think that's uh, where gang members fuckin' with bodies?
Dude, it might be. Yeah, so like I said guys, this place is full of uh, gang activity and whatnot. So we gotta be careful when we're in here, just in case somebody decides to come, come in here. Cause you don't know anybody's intentions and they don't know ours. But, just gotta be careful when we're in here, but it's uh, awesome so far, I'm excited. Let's see what else is in here. We got fire trucks guys.
I don't know how to put this together man.
Uh, uh, how do you put that dish? Oh my gosh.
How do you figure this out?
Man, what kinda kid knows how to do this?
What are they-
Jesus Christ, I quit! Let's check out this room. It's a bunch of old desks, there's a whole bunch of books.
I know dude, I love it!
Jesus Christ. Bunch of tiles, it's like they just threw a bunch of stuff in here. I don't know, I mean, it's full of mold, but whatever.
Yeah.
I don't know if I had this stuff. Go on then explorers. No, it's like the shower's the bathroom, same thing.
Mom is-
Mom is worried, what the world.
Thanks for telling me.
And there's that single filing card in the room again.
Application for employment.
Why is your light, my phone don't like you, Kevin, I don't like your light.
Application for employment.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Johnson Smith.
Oh, that's from nineteen ninety-three, god!
We had to put on our masks because... It's an exit sign, I'll show you guys. Had to put on our masks here because it started getting really hard to breathe, I felt every bit of uh, every bit of dust and mold in my mouth. So, we souped up, we got our masks on, make sure you always bring your masks explorers, cause it'll ruin the exploration. And also-
Yeah, you don't wanna take yourself.
Make sure you exit politely, out the exit door because that's awesome. That's so cool! Yeah, they got moss on the freaking floor dog.
Damn dude, what can you call that, shit right there, it's pretty wet.
Oh dang! Good. Your foot might go through the floor.
Yeah.
Let's check it out. There's a ruined printer, it's got like, a lot of bird crap on it. So the floor gets worse from here on up. Check out this room. Yeah, Jesus! Uh, yeah, Michael's been thinking about plates, but he don't want these plates. Gotta watch our step around here. Jesus. All this cardboard and paper just ruined, look at that desk, got so like moldy, it just fell.
Just fell over.
Okay, we got a, it seems like a better room to go into. Oh, that's where the garage door is. What, what, what is that?
Oh, this is tough.
Yeah, don't catch yourself on them. You know you have a old school in the door, looks like that. And the funny thing is, the maintenance was the cleanest room. Like somebody was uh, somebody was playing with paint. What, what'd you find? Oh wow!
That's a old mess right there.
It really is, it looks like Michael's mask, but oh.
Yeah!
That's pretty cool. If it was actually modern, I'd take it. We still haven't made it into the main room still. So hopefully that's uh, not ruined. I had to take my mask off when we got outside because it started fogging up my glasses too bad. But we're gonna try and see the other room, uh, that hallway right there. Was blocked off by, by everything to get to the main building, so we're gonna try this other way around here, through that door, or right there. You gonna get in? Can you? Check out all these computers guys. God, I've had to crawl. Yeah, I know you are, you're too old for this, but Urbex is life! Okay, so bad news. That seals the way into the main room, just like the other uh, hall. This place was locked though, uh, on this side, so this is all new to us right here. We haven't been in this side yet, we're going back. We were about to climb through this window right here, but I'm glad we didn't, cause uh, it sucked. Let's check this part of the building out. It's like throw stuff in here, look at that cement mixers, that's a machine! What is this, is this a pencil dispenser?
The thing has a pencil dispenser.
It's a big old, it's a big old pencil dispenser.
Oh no, encyclopedia's-
Oh, encyclopedia's got, we found encyclopedia's. I'm gonna check out this part. It's like the remains of an Urbexer. Yeah, it's another face mask. Check it out, it's weird. This one's different though. It's like Urbexers come here and die. Let's not say that though, cause we're Urbexers in here, we don't wanna die. Five scripts, more. That, dude, these are like, these are like machines that I have at my job. I really have no idea how we're gonna get into the big, uh, big part of the school. We're still gonna look around and try to find our way after, after we explore. It's a diploma?
Yeah.
Diploma's found guys!
Diploma's found.
Diploma's found! Lunch, lunchroom confirmed, this was the lunchroom. There's another trophy too. Another stuffed animal guys. Cap, uh, look, lunch table.
Oh, okay, okay, I thought you saw the word lunchroom.
No! Okay guys, we made it into the main building of the school. Made it. Papers everywhere. What is this? Dollar library. Please just call. I don't know what you are. Big old TV. Hey guys, we've officially made it into the main part of the school. And I'm gonna have to be very careful because I think there's people that still come here and they do some kinda work maybe, I don't know, we saw a notice, but... I don't know, this place is looking pretty nice right now. Impressive progress, what's up?
Sixty-four yearbook.
You found a yearbook, oh! Okay guys, there are lights on. So the power is still being ran through here.
Huh? That's something we didn't expect to see in stores.
It's not something we didn't expect to see, so we gotta be pretty careful. No, nobody's in here, it wouldn't- Yeah, that's graffiti, there's people been in here, I don't know how long it's been like this. Check it, it's still there.
No way dude.
Yeah dude, we got offices.
No way! Dude, check this out, thirty-eight.
Attendant from nineteen thirty-eight. Jesus. We're having to be very quiet because there's people in the parking lot next to us. And we don't want them to know we're here, because... Well, because that would just end the fun, that wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Check it out. There's the front doors, not the front doors, but the side doors. Michael's having a heart attack right now. Michael's having a heart attack with all these books.
Look at all this stuff.
Found shirts guys, we found freaking shirts!
There has to be a name, Sparty's T- We found freaking t-shirts.
Look at all these books, shoes, books, books everywhere. You know how much all these books probably cost? Probably a lot. And they're all just sitting here ready to rot.
Thirty dollars.
A book, thirty dollars a book.
They got books still in the box!
Like, that's crazy.
It's a door.
Check out that door. Can you get in?
No, I don't think so.
Nah, it's locked from the inside, look at all this crap, look at this. More books, it smells like an old school in here. It's like a dry stage. Damn, look at these. This is a throwback right here man.
Oh no!
Guys, that's the main roads out there.
Let's go, let's go this way. There's a little bottom of that door.
I just made it hard for myself, cause I could've just went to there. Hey man, I don't know what this is, but it looks pretty cool. It's like special offices, they're designed to people. Denise Rancin?
Dude! Denise Rancin?
There's paperwork right here.
God s-
This is a board member. Show you guys. It's a board member.
Virtual Finland?
What they getting from Finland? Melvin Smith, this is his office. Mr. Melvin liked it by himself, I guess. Nah, what the world? My bad. Check that old beast out.
Oh my goodness.
It's time of year? Oh, what is going on up here? Look at these steps dog!
Oh god dang, these steps dude! Wow!
It's like a control room, look at them steps, look at that! We were just down there.
Dude!
We were just down there trying to get in. I can't believe we got it.
Look at all this. God dang!
I've never seen like a control room like this.
Yeah, look how old the bricks are dude, god!
This is epic.
Season two man!
Season two. What's up guys? Check it out, check it out. It's the media center, but it's locked.
Oh guess what? That's how we get in.
No one beyond the point except the security guard. So it's locked right here guys, but Urbex is life. So we're getting in another way. Now we're in the, now we're in the, uh, what you call it, whatever you call it. We are officially in the front of the building. Like this is, this is where the pillows were, we're in, we're in the front. We just gotta, we just gotta find a way out through. Chose, ugh, peanut butter and a free-
Oh my god!
What's wrong with these people?
I'm gonna check some things, you ready?
You better touch that stuff man. Two thousand twelve, what? Two thousand twelve? It's like the mail room or something, or just like the inventory room, I don't know. There's files everywhere. System backup prior to three oh five. We got checks too. They made bank, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Payroll, it's for, it's for payroll.
Jesus.
Oh, we should have been here.
I know, we should have got a job here, whatever. Laptops. There's a projector, like a... See this thing Michael? This thing looks like, it's a legit projector. Judge keys man, this is insane.
I'll keep your laptop in the middle? Your lights better for taking pictures. Toilet access?
Ew, squishy.
Oh god!
Oh man. Oh upstairs. Phew, smells like mold. Oh wow, that is dangerous. That's a sink-
Here's a real laptop right here.
I found a sinkhole.
Really?
Yeah. This whole thing is sinking, look at that floor.
Oh god!
Jesus. Alright now, let's go upstairs and hope not to fall through. Nah, it's like the attic right there, look at that, what is, what is going on in there?
Is that like detention?
I don't know. Better be careful though. We might fall through this floor too, you never know. This is so weird. Be careful.
Oh geez, I just bumped my head on that stupid thing.
Bumped your head? This is crazy. So we just came across from the sinkhole, to get over here. It's like the locker room or something. Is that a bathroom? Like a closet. It's another big old room.
You can tell this place is super old.
Yeah, very old school. Very moldy. Number two oh four guys.
Dude, I waited all day to see room two oh four, here it is.
I know, right, all day, two oh four.
Finally here.
This is what we wanted. I'm just kidding, hey look, Michael, that's your car.
Yeah, and I know, but it's still there.
I know, I'm very surprised his car is still there. Nobody's tested. Guys.
Oh my god!
I used to have-
Oh my god!
I actually used to have this phone, so-
Oh man!
Nokia, they're all Nokias man, if you drop those, the world breaks. Yeah, we made it through the door, we don't need you.
We don't need you anyway, stupid wall, have to kick that wall.
I ain't even gonna stick them.
Oh dude, we got t-shirts.
T-shirts?
Oh god, we got t-shirts dude!
No, 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 that is like-
No, we got t-shirts dude, I'm going in!
T-shirts?
We got t-shirts man!
What t-shirts?
We got, look at it!
That's, that's like people clothes! I hate to say it again, but my camera's gonna die, but luckily I think this is about all that we're gonna see. Uh, we've pretty much explored this whole area, so it's a good thing, usually when the camera dies, it's about to die, it's about to, at the end of the Urbex. Dark room. This is a math room. Our hair is a mess, we're dirty as hell. But we managed to explore Hancock.
What's this place called? Uh, I thought it was called Sparta, uh, primary school.
I thought it was the hospital.
No, this is the high school right there.
Oh.
That's the... This used to be, okay, this most recent, this building was most recently Sparta Board of Education.
Uh huh.
That's what it was.
Okay, so we just explored this most recent Sparta Board of Education.
Founded nineteen thirty-five, it was a, it was a elementary school.
It wasn't an elementary school. We made it. It uh, took us a little while to maneuver through half of this stuff, but the fact that we made it through all of this... We made it through all of that guys, I'm proud of us.
We made it man. Hey, I wanna give a shout out to that nice lady I met at Walmart, who recognized me. This video's for you, you're awesome, this is why we do this.
This is why we do this. Okay, I hope you guys enjoyed and we'll see you next time. Urbex is life, let explorers see us in two! Also, as you saw at the beginning of the video, they completely boarded up the whole uh, hospital that we went into, like two weeks ago. So, we pretty much were like the last people to ever go in there, uh, and uh, pretty much record that.
Yeah. We timed it.
We, uh, I think that's pretty awesome, at the same time, it's kinda sad, cause we wanted to go in there again today, just to look around again, but they completely boarded the whole building up.
Every single opening that was boarded.
It's insane, so I'm happy that we managed to get in there and record it all before they did that, so I'm proud of us.